I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council and read about Successor Agency to order here at Clear Lake City Hall. Council Chambers located in 14050 Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California, 95422. It is Thursday, June 22nd, 2017, again at 5:30 PM. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Mayor Perdak?
Present. Councilmember Bennett, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We had clergy here, President Pastor, wanting to give invocation. We have them scheduled, but I don't see them out there. On that note, if I may, we've had a tragedy in our United States Navy. If you would, just a few minutes of your thoughts and prayers for the seven sailors lost in the collision in the Sea of Japan and their families who are struggling right now to process their loss. Thank you very much. Mr. Folsom, any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Jones, any actions from this session?
No, Mr. Mayor, there were no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is presentation of certificates in recognition of some pretty outstanding students. Let's see. Mr. Harrison, Mr. Sabatier, would you join me at the podium? I'm picking on a couple of dads. And I might have Bree Moran. Is Bree here? Not present? Ms. Becknell, would you come and receive this for Bree? Next, I was wondering if Eric Graves is present. Is Eric here? Now, I can't even, what was your grade point average?
Four point three.
I didn't think you could go over a four point oh. He's got a four point three. We're liking to recognize him as the salutatorian for Lower Lake High School. An amazing accomplishment, years and years of hard work and study, well, it would have been for me. Was it a lot of work?
Lots of work.
Lots of work. Congratulations and thank you so much for representing our school and our area. And what's your plans in the future?
Going to college and then...
Going to college? Where are you going to college?
I'm going to a U of U college.
Excellent.
Transfer my major in economics.
We could use some economics majors. But anyway, thank you very much. And I don't know if you know Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
And Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Very proud of you.
Excellent job. Thank you so much and thank you for being here with us tonight. You're very welcome. Is Jose Martinez here? Jose?
She represents Jose.
Hi.
Hi.
We're recognizing Jose tonight because of his accomplishments at the KECC, Conacta Education Center. He also received high grades, high-grade standards, and was selected as the salutatorian at the KECC.
He was unable to be here and sends his regards. He is in a dental training program that he became part of while attending the K E C.
So he was part of the medical program?
He's part of the medical program. Within the next four years, he'll be a dental surgeon.
And forgive me, I don't know you.
Lambert, who was that?
Nice to meet you.
The principal?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You know Bruno?
Yes.
Yeah. Next, I am not going to be able to pronounce this last name. Can you help me?
Yes.
This is Lev?
Congratia.
Yeah, sure it is. Help me with that.
Congratia?
Congratia. Sure. This is our valedictorian. And your GPA? If you don't mind my asking?
I don't know. I don't know what my transcript is. It's a wedding bell.
Yeah, well, congratulations, because I'm sure you did well. What was your area of study? Your focus?
Graduation.
Graduation? Arts, science, medical?
Um...
I'm putting you on the spot here.
Just getting over it.
Just getting out of there? The reason that I ask, if you're not familiar with the KECC, and maybe I should ask the superintendent to help me out here, or maybe the admin. They have a fantastic, fantastic program, really driven and established to help the kids who want to get into the medical field in the arts and sciences. Am I right?
Yeah.
Help this old guy here.
Yeah, they have like internships.
Exactly.
Where you go to the hospital and you do stuff.
Do stuff. Get your hands dirty.
There are a bunch of different departments.
Because I can't imagine, I've known people who have done this, gone through their education, got to the end, got their job, and realized, you know what? I really don't like that blood and stuff, and I'm a doctor. You know, so they go on to something else. Go into law enforcement and realize they don't like working at night, so they go on to something else. So this is really a fantastic program. Kudos to Conacta Unified School District for, you know, the conception and putting it all together. And sir, thank you very much. Thank you for your hard efforts and work.
Thank you.
Best of luck in the future. I should ask Steve to come up. Because this next one...
I don't see her.
I don't see her.
Rachel's not here?
I don't think so.
What in the world? Nothing like hosting a party and not having the best daughter show up.
They told me six thirty.
Six thirty? No way. Anyway, this is the recipient from our Woodland College, Rachel Black, and she is the recipient of the HUBA Medal of Woodland Community College Lake County Campus. An outstanding achievement. Would you mind receiving this for her?
Absolutely will. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, and we are very proud of her as well.
Yeah.
And thank you for all you're doing at the college. I don't know if you're aware, the vice mayor spends some time down there as well.
Yeah.
Doing great things, and we're so excited for you guys to be in our community and all the great things you bring.
And we're growing.
And you're growing.
That's a good thing.
Enrollment is up.
Yep.
And now that I'm done hamming it up, I'd like to turn it over to the vice mayor, who has a question to mention he would like to make.
Hello.
Show off.
I'll use the microphone for this one. So I'll read this and then I'll make a quick statement. Actually, before I read it, if I can have the front row members please come up. Thank you so much for being here. And I'll let you say a word after me.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Or two.
I appreciate that.
Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month, June 2017. Whereas, our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has long been coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. Whereas, in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28th, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, LGBT citizens rose up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. In the four decades since, civil rights for LGBT people have grown substantially, and LGBT pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. Whereas, California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBT citizens, and while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Clear Lake does hereby proclaim June 2017 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in Clear Lake and calls upon its citizens to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the diversity of our community. Dated as 22nd day of June 2017, signed by Russell Perdak, our mayor. And before I pass the microphone to these fine people up here, I was invited not too long ago to the Democratic Party to speak on this exact subject, and civil rights in general, it's what we really love about our constitution in our country, to the promise of being treated equally and fairly, no matter who you are. And unfortunately, that's been the ladder we've been climbing as an America, and we've been doing a great job to move forward, but we're not done. And this is why we have to keep celebrating the steps we have taken. Our previous president legalized same-sex marriage. That's huge. That has changed everything. In there, it talks about how California has always been a leader in the civil rights movement. I'm talking today about Harvey Milk. There is a huge difference in what that has made between the 1960s and 70s of the way the LGBT community was treated compared to the way that they're treated today. And I want people to look and look up Harvey Milk, read about him, watch the movie about him. There is great importance in understanding what struggles really occurred not too long ago in your guys' generation as well. So thank you for being here with us to celebrate this moment, and I hope this is a celebration we do every single year.
Where are you going, Steve? Oh, no. Oh, no. Get up here. On behalf of all of the LGBT community members in Clear Lake and their families, friends, and allies, I am so honored to accept this. I also want to say that it is a big deal to be accepted and supported in your community, the community you love, the community you live, all right? I want to thank Willie Sepeda for showing up. Chief, thank you for being here. You've been a huge support to the community and a huge support to me, and for that, I am so grateful. Also honored to be standing here with Steve and his partner Steve because...
Husband?
Husband, Steve, because these guys are an example of what love looks like. They just celebrated 17 years of marriage. That's a huge accomplishment. So on behalf of all of us gays out there, thank you so much, Mayor, Bruno, City Council, and Chief Sullivan. Thank you for your support and love. Thank you.
Yeah, it's for being here, you guys. She said it great. Next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time when you can come and speak to the council on an item not agendized, something not on our current agenda for this evening, for up to three minutes. Please remember, we're not able to respond or answer questions during public comment, but we will take note and appreciate anyone who has an opinion to share. That said, is anybody wishing to speak now in our public comment section? Seeing no one, I will bring it back, our closed public comment, bring it back to council as we move to the consent agenda. Mr. Folsom, any changes to the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, any items you would like to have discussed and polled?
Thank you.
Seeing no changes, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilwoman Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Council carries unanimously. Moving on to our public hearing. It's a public hearing to consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 operating and capital budgets. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kristen Becknell, our finance director.
Evening, Ms. Becknell.
Good evening. Just give me one second. Okay, I stand up here because I can't read this and read that and looking through at the same time.
Good.
I'm a multitasker, but I'm not quite that good. I don't have eyes in the back of my head, although I tell my kids I always do. So, okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. So tonight, we're looking at the adoption of the fiscal year ending 2018 operating and capital budgets. You'll notice that's a little bit different than last year. Last year, it was just the operating budgets. This year, I have split them into two separate budgets, an operating budget and a capital budget. The next item that we will discuss will be the adoption of the game number, that's item number eight. Okay. So, the council policy and the accountability role. So through the strategic plan, the council defines the vision and the goals for the city. You ensure performance consistent with the strategic plan by aligning the resources of the city to support the strategic plan, and you do that through the budget. Periodically, you review the progress of the management and employees of the city by reviewing the strategic plan, its goals, and the budget in terms of the work that we're doing accomplishing those goals. And during the year, you make appropriate adjustments if needed, and most of that typically takes place during the big year budget review, but of course, it can take place at any time during the year. So, the process for adopting this year's budget started in late February. It culminated on May 25th with a budget workshop with the city council where we went through, you'll remember, the preliminary review draft of the budget. What you have in front of you is the final draft of the budget, which if adopted tonight will then become the adopted budgets. The highlights of the budget, it's balanced and provides a contribution to reserves again this year. It further refines and focuses the efforts of the city to improvements in the city, and this is a transitional budget in the sense that the city has been overcoming its inertia and generating a lot of momentum to solving the assorted problems that it has. Some basic statistics in the budget, the total operational capital project budget's totaled 14.2 million. The total operational budget is 8.65 million. Now, of that, 5.97 is personnel cost, which is 69 percent. You'll notice that that's a little bit lower than a previous year. Typically, personnel costs have been run closer to 80 percent. The reason that you have that distortion this year is because of the adoption of Measure V. And in this budget, what I have done is while Measure V is reported in the capital budget, I've also put it in the operating budget. And the reason I've done that is Measure V is a continuous project that goes on for 20 years, which is how long Measure V lasts. It's a whole series of capital projects that will take place over 20 years. So, the effect of that is, is that will tend to increase the non-personnel side of the operational costs, which are $2.68 million. So keep in mind, the personnel costs haven't reduced as a percentage of the budget. We've just increased other parts of the budget because of Measure V spending. Total capital projects totaled 6.17 million going into this next year. A major chunk of that, which is going on right now, is of course the Phillips Avenue and 18th Avenue projects, which are funded by CDVG, Community Development Block Grants, and ATP, the Active Transportation Plan Grant. And then the other portion of that are a whole series of other projects which are primarily funded through bond proceeds of $4.19 million. And there are 18, 19 separate projects involved in that. So our Public Works Department is going to be extremely busy. In terms of the number of employees, this budget increases our total employees, full-time equivalent are 66.76 employees. Now, we don't actually have .676 of an employee. It's just how they accumulate over the years and some of it as part-time employees. That is an increase of six FTE over last year. Five of those FTE come from Measure V. Measure V, and we hired those employees because a lot of those are going to be doing, those five employees are going to be doing a lot of the work in terms of the grading of the dirt roads in the city, which in the long run will be less expensive to have our own employees do it than contracting out and we have to pay for them in wage. The other one employee is an additional animal control officer. So we will have two animal control officers in the city, and they're in the process of, I think, final reviews, I think, on the animal...
Next week.
Next week? Okay. So in code enforcement, we have 4.7 positions. Three of them are funded through CDVG, and the others are paid out of the general fund. And many of you will realize that code enforcement has been extremely busy over the past month, getting abandoned cars off our streets. And I'm pleased to let you know, in case the rest of the public doesn't know, we just received another distribution from the AVA funds in the range of $141,000. So the total amount that we've gotten from the AVA over the past 60 days has been about $180,000 total to go to pulling abandoned cars off the streets of Clear Lake, which goes a long way to clean up our city, which is one of the primary goals in the strategic plan. The police department has a total of 31 positions. Twenty-three and a half are sworn officers. Keep in mind that the Measure P staffing goal is based on 500, one officer per 500 people. Our population according to the state, I know that our chief thinks that we have probably a couple hundred thousand people in the city based on a number of policy gaps, but that's not the state things. We should have basically 31 sworn officers. We only have 23, 25 funded at this point. If we wanted to bring our sworn officers up to the 31 Measure P level, it would cost us basically an additional $900,000 to do. We're working toward it, but we're obviously going to have to develop some additional resources to get there. Public Works has a total of 14 positions now. Keep in mind, that includes five positions from Measure V. Public Works, 3.94, that's Public Works in the general fund. Parks has 2.42 positions. And Roads, which is the road tax, which comes from gas tax, two and a half positions. Animal Control has now three and a half positions, two animal control officers, and one and a half office and kennetech positions. Community Development has 1.95 positions. We have an engineer position scheduled, that's one full-time equivalent. We are now an engineer at this point. We are searching. The problem is, is that so is everybody else, so unless we want to spend a lot of money for an engineer, we're going to have a struggle filling that position, but we've got a budget in anyway. Council, five positions, certainly an important part of our budget. And of course, administration, which is me, finance, and the city manager, equally as important, I have 5.5 positions. So, that's basically an overview of the budget. Our request of you is to adopt Resolution 2017-36, adopting the fiscal year ending 2018 operating and capital budgets. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Becknell? We have a question. Vice Mayor?
On the first revision that we looked at the budget, there was, I think we were somewhere in the range of $3,000 to $6,000 in the hole, which was not necessarily in the hole, but something along there. Am I reading this, that it's $13,000 now? Am I reading that correctly when I look at the revenue and expense?
You know what? Didn't bring my budget review. Let me...
Let's take a 30-second break. How about a couple minutes?
Yeah. I'm 30 seconds running my office and grabbing a question.
Put your hands together. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Apparently, there's a party, an after-party.
Nice. Don't let any grass... Let me see what I saw. Hi, Bill. Terrible your fault, Will. Terrible your fault.
All right, we are even the beat. Mr. Becknell is back for the budget vote.
Yeah, sorry about that. I dropped out of the office and I forgot. So, let's see. Your question? No, it's minus 2,000.
Okay. Thank you for correcting that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Becknell before I open it up for public comment? Or question? Thank you, Mr. Becknell.
Sure.
This time, I'd like to open this public hearing up for public comment. If you would like to ask Mr. Becknell or a member of staff or council, this is your chance to do this on this item, item seven, which is our fiscal year 2018 operating and capital budget. Let's try to form an orderly line to the right. Seeing no one wishing to make a comment, I will close public comment. I do need a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Bennett? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Council carries unanimously. Any other information or questions? Mr. Vice Mayor, you'd like to make action?
I just wanted to make one quick comment. It's a decision that we made not too long ago, and we can really see it in action on this budget, and that's the soon-to-be-introduced solar panels that will really help reduce the cost of our energy so that we can put those costs towards solving some of our problems in the city. So I really appreciate that being brought to us, us approving of it, and really having it show in our budget today in front of us. Thank you. Let me get to the part where I can make a motion, unless somebody beats me to it. Thank you. Everybody's trying to help me out here. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-37, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting the appropriation, no, that's the No, that's the same one. 2017-36, not 37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting the fiscal year ending 2018 operating and capital budgets.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdak?
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Becknell. Thank you very much, Mr. Becknell. Moving on to Item 8, consideration of adoption, the appropriations, uh, limit, GAN limit, if I'm reading that correctly, for fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2017, designate the formula to be used for calculation of SANE. Mr. Becknell?
Yes. Okay. So what we're doing here is, back when Proposition 13 was passed, well, those many years ago, that operated as a restriction on the amount of revenue that could be raised by cities by limiting the amount of property taxes. The year after Proposition 13 passed, Proposition 4 was passed, which was a limitation on the appropriations that cities and local governments could pass. And that's called the GAN limit, because it was sponsored by, I think it was Senator GAN at that point. So the way, the way it works is it's supposed to operate as a regulator, a regulator on the spending side, not just on the income side. So it's one thing you can limit the income to come in, but if you don't limit the amount going out, in theory, they can continue to spend, even though they may have some issues about where the money might come from to pay for it. So they created the GAN limit. So what the GAN limit did was it set the level of spending, and it allows it to grow based on a combination of a couple of factors. One is the cost of living, or some sort of cost factor, and the other is the percentage increase in the local population. Now, the local population would be, for example, here, it could be the city of Clearlake, or it could be the county. We can choose which we're going to use and how we calculate that formula. So at the end of the year, what happens is, and Proposition 4 made a couple other things, which are particularly germane to this action tonight. So what I did was, the State Department of Finance, each year in May, issues a price factor and population information for the state and each locality in the state. So for us, the price factor, which is basically a per capita personal income factor, is what we use, was an increase of 3.69% for the fiscal year 1718, what I call fiscal year in 2018. And then our city population, according to the state, technically between the end of 2017 and, excuse me, the end of 2016 and the end of 2017, technically decreased. I don't believe that for a minute, but that's what they said. So I used the county population change, which was an increase of .24%. So you apply those factors to 100, so it gets 1.0369, and the population change is 1.0024. And you come up with a combined factor of 1.03938. Now, your original, you have a revised resolution up there, because I made a 4,000ths percent error in the calculation, and ordinarily, I wouldn't worry about it, because it didn't have any effect on the final outcome, but I know that next year, when the auditor comes in and does the honor, he will, he will name me on it, so I wanted to make sure it was correct. So what we do is we take the appropriation limit that was adopted last year, so, which was $8,39,910, which you adopted and approved last year, multiply it by the combined factor of 1.03938, that gives us a new appropriations limit of $8,356,522, which is the maximum we can spend from our appropriations. The appropriations that are subject to the limit are a combination of the taxes that we collect. So our general fund taxes, and if you go back and you look at the budget, our general fund taxes are 3.8 million. Measure P taxes, which are the police taxes, are 1.16,000, and the Measure B taxes is 1.7 million. That totals, that totals to $6,587,000. You compare that to the GAN limit, which is 8,356, which is the red number, you subtract our limit of 6,587, the excess capacity that we could spend without violating the GAN limit is $1,769,281, which I would be more than happy to do if we had. But we don't, so I can't. So, but that is the amount of the limit that is set for the city. Now, interestingly enough, there are a lot of cities that butt up against their GAN limit every year. Clearlake hasn't been fortunate enough to do that. We will find, over the years, as our, as our sales tax increases through commercial development and our property values go up, we will, it is likely that we will butt up against the appropriations limit. But we don't have to worry about that right now, and that certainly is something that we, we hope we can do in the future. So that's how the calculation is made. So my recommendation is that you adopt the appropriation limit for fiscal year in 2018 and designate the formula to be used for calculation of SANE, which is what I mistook you through. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Becknell. Any questions? Our finance officer at this point? Seeing no questions in council, I will open it up for public comment. Question? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? This is your time to address council or ask a question of staff. Seeing that, I'll close that and bring it back to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-37, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlake, adopting the appropriations limit for the FYE 2018, fiscal year 2017, 2018, and designating the formula to be used for calculation of SANE.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by the Vice Mayor. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perta?
Aye.
Moving on to Item 9, consideration of Resolution Number 2017-36, accepting the quitclaim deed for Austin Beach. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give a little background, there is a long legal history, but I won't go into the whole thing. The bottom line is that there was a legal decision back in 1973 that included a reverb clause, that if the Austin Beach property, which is the property directly kitty-corner over here that's at the beach, was used for other than a public beach, then the property would revert back to prior ownership, which was the Robie family. There's been a lot of controversy over the years as to whether for-profit activities could happen there, and there's currently a council policy cultivating nonprofit and for-profit activities on that location. Mr. Ed Robie is the last remaining heir to the reverb clause. He is willing to sign over a quitclaim deed if the city will continue to allow the public beach use for at least 100 years. From all indications, there's no reason why we would not do that. This will allow for-profit and nonprofit activities and events to happen at, park in the beach for at least the next 100 years. Current council policy allows nonprofit events at Austin Park, but Austin Beach, oops, not sure if I did that right. Current council policy allows nonprofit events at Austin Beach, at Austin Park, but Austin Beach, they are not allowed any for-profit activities. So assuming that the certificate of acceptance, the quitclaim is approved, then staff recommends the council approve the updated policy for the Austin Beach park, beach use. So essentially, there's two different things. One is that we are asking for you to accept the quitclaim deed, and then also update the council policy to allow us to have nonprofit and for-profit uses over at the beach.
Thank you.
So our recommended actions are that by motion, you approve the Resolution Numbers 2017-36, accepting a quitclaim deed from E.A. Robie and Company and Ed Robie for property in his Austin beach, and authorize the City Manager to take any other actions necessary. And then by motion, amend the council policy on Austin Park and Austin beach use. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Councilmember Overton?
I don't really have a question, but I do have a lot to commend Mr. Robie for finally clearing this up for us. Since I've been on council, this has always been just a nightmare fight, and I am, you know, really, really thank you for giving this to the community to use, and we will be able to continue to help do some activities for our city in nonprofits and for-profits. It's going to make it where we can actually do some very nice community things, and I really, really thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bennett?
Well, I look forward to using that property for the next 100 years.
I'll see you there.
I don't know what's funny about that. Somewhere, I think my son right now is moving it on the DVDs. I have home movies taken in the late 50s or early 60s of our family with my sister's kids, my nieces and nephews, running up the beach from the lake. So it's, you know, the history just goes back. And I know Ed and his family's been involved for many years. I think it's a, it's a great, it's just, it's nice, it's happening fun and for all this time. Thank you.
Comments by council? Councilmember Harris?
Well, the Robie family has been near and dear to my family's heart since we were, since I was a child, since I was born, really. And obviously, the Robie family's always been a big contributor to our community, and this just goes on, pointing with what I would, I would have seen growing up. I think that it's fantastic that we can continue to utilize a, really a unique and wonderful facility for the city of Clearlake. Clearly, your intentions have always been to the betterment of our community, and this is just another testament to that. So I very much appreciate that, Ed Robie.
Thank you, Ed. And before I open it up for public comment, I'd just like to say, we have the best beach on the lake because of the Robie family. The views at sunset have been captured by many a photographer and artist. They're spectacular. It's one of the things I truly enjoy on my ride home, watching the sun go down behind that beautiful mountain, and the colors across the lake is just absolutely gorgeous. So again, thank you, Ed, and thank you, the Robie family, for initially making that donation to the city, because it sure has seen a lot of use and a lot of good family memories, as Nick pointed out. That said, and seeing no other pins raised, would anyone from the public like to address council? My Mr. Robie, please step forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is something that's kind of on my bucket list, and I'm glad it's finally getting taken care of. Just, I'm not going to talk a long time, but I would like to let you know that my very first paying job, my father paid me a buck and a half a day when I was about 12, to go down and clean up the beach.
Can we give you that now?
Give you a raise, 50 cents a raise.
Two dollars.
Anyway, another small piece of, my, my parents were very involved in the community, and my father was involved in the, you know, there were three attempts to incorporate before it finally passed, and my father was involved in the first two, and then he got old and retired, and other people took it up and it passed.
Turn it over to you? Turn his, turn his job over to you?
In a way, yeah. Anyway, I'm just very happy to do this. I'm glad it's going to remain, you know, a public facility. I've never had a problem with anybody having crafts fairs or other, you know, profit or nonprofit uses of it, as long as it stays a beach and open to the public for athletic and other, you know, recreational purposes. So this is a good deal, and I plan to be back here in 100 years to check on it.
Anyone else wishing to speak? This is your chance to do so. Not anybody but Liz. Just kidding. Yes, Liz?
Hi. Okay, this is just really quick. I think if there isn't one there now, there should be, a plaque commemorating the Robie family and the donation that he spent. That's it.
Mr. Shields?
I have a question about this. Now, Brewbaker owned all of this. He dedicated Austin Park to the community. Now, you cannot just go on any property and build a building and claim it. It doesn't work like that. Now, years ago, Ed's daddy went over to Austin Beach, tried to build a building and claim that property.
Would you like me to clear that up? You'd like to, this is your chance.
Since Mr. Shields brought it up, actually, my father did build a building on the beach. It was, he called it the game room. He didn't try to build it, he built it, and it had pinball machines and a snow cone machine and a jukebox, and they sold stuff to the people that were on the beach. And it became kind of a, it was one of the original takings cases, if you get into planning law, if you understand what takings means, where some people in town sued my father, saying this has been a public beach for years and years and years, and therefore it's a public beach. And the court ruled, yeah, that's right. So they took the beach from my dad, even though he'd been paying taxes on it for years and had title insurance and all that good stuff. But anyway, the, the point is, that's where this confusion came up, because in the court's decision, it said, yeah, it's a beach, and it's got to stay a beach, and so we're going to make it a public beach. But if it's ever used for anything but a beach, then it goes back to the Robies. That's how I ended up standing here right now, and I want to, you know, take care of that cloud on the title. Now, it's also not true that the Brewbakers dedicated Austin's park to the public. The Brewbakers subdivided a whole bunch of lots back in the Austins' tract subdivision back in the 20s or 30s, and what they did was, they gave everybody that bought a lot an interest in the park, undivided interest in what they called the athletic field. It had a baseball diamond on the corner there. But anyway, the, the point is that, there's a lot of history here. I remember when I was a kid, my father meeting with the county's attorneys after this lawsuit happened, because the court said it was a public beach, but nobody was taking care of it, and it was getting in pretty bad shape. And so my father helped the county acquire title to the park property as well as the beach property, so that the county could maintain it. And then when the city incorporated, it came to the city. So there you go.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? Seeing that, I'll bring it back. And for deliberation? I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
May I interrupt?
Please.
The correct resolution number is 2017-38.
38.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2017-38, accepting the quitclaim deed from E.A. Robie and Company, Inc., and Ed Robie for the property known as Austin's Beach, and authorize City Manager to take any other actions necessary.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. I have a motion in a second. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have another item on this subject. Any further discussion or deliberation?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend council policy on Austin Park and Austin Beach use.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Can we also have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Pardon?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much again, Mr. Roby, for coming here and making your presentations as well as everyone else.
Is it load off my mind?
Glad you got that on your bucket. Very well. Moving on to item 10, need to discuss the license agreement for non-motorized water sports rental at Austin Beach. How convenient.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you for amending the council policy, because now we can hear this particular item. As mentioned before, the previous council policy on Austin Beach was to not allow any for-profit use of Austin Beach. Since you've now approved that, the following item is a license agreement for the use of Austin Beach to rent non-motorized sports equipment. The term of this agreement would be just for this summer, starting from whenever we get full execution to the end of October. They would rent it for $250 per month. The licensee will operate from a temporary pop-up tent structure at Austin Beach. The licensee can sell prepackaged food and beverages only. The licensee is subject to any other relevant permits through the state, county, wherever, as well as getting a business license through the city. So essentially, they're going to, and the proponents are here, they can give a short description of what they want to do, but essentially, they're going to be out there renting kayaks, paddleboards, paddleboards, any other type of non-motorized, so they're not going to have jet skis or any of those types of things. But if you could explain a little bit more?
Any questions of staff before we open it up for public? Seeing none, if you would mind introducing yourself?
Hello, I'm Jessica Sandage.
I'm Josh Menriquez.
Seeing none, let's reach.
So a brief description of our business, sort of your bike?
Please. What are you, what are you going to do?
We intend to do a kayak and hydro bike, water hydro bike rental, and also paddleboard rental to kind of bring the community back into the outdoors, to show them the beauty that we see, the beauty that you see when you drive home and see that sunset. We're doing a more low cost, so that the community can really actually engage in this activity, as well as bringing outside people to show them what we have and what we see every single day.
Very good.
It's nothing that is going to be staying there, and it will be taken down by 6:00 PM, and it's just a pop-up tent with everything on the side.
Did you say, what are your hours of operation? What days will you be operating?
It will be from Thursday through Tuesday, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The pop-up tent that we have is just right here.
It's more a canopy.
It's more of a canopy. Nothing too big. We're not going to take up any more than 300 square feet. I don't even see us going that big.
Okay. So just a standard pop-up canopy like any family?
No structure that will remain there overnight.
Right. What are the dimensions on the canopy?
It's going to be a 12 by 12.
12 by 12?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
And we're also going to be able to take cars as well as cash. So we'll have that on site to make that convenient for everybody.
And there is, there is room for growth for us in this area. I mean, we're starting with stuff that's non-motorized for right now, because, let's face it, insurance is going to really be tough for a company up and coming with motorized sports injuries, stuff like that. So we're eliminating that. Not saying we're not going to get into it, we would love to. We just want to make sure that it does take off properly this first kind of cycle.
Very good. Councilor Harris, you have a question?
Sure. Out of curiosity, the non-motorized, that looks like a paddle, paddleboat, are there going to be the type of boards that you stand on and balance and that sort of thing? And if so, will there be any kind of classes and that sort of? I know it's popular on that end of the lake, so it would be really neat to see it popular on the center of the lake. I think what you guys are doing is fantastic. This concept that brings attention to our beach is everything we want. So I'm very supportive of this, but I would really like to see that, too, if that's a possibility in the future.
We're going to actually grow into doing tours and getting bird watchers. We're going to have three different sites that we're going to launch off of. It's Austin's Park, Red Bud, and also at the campground. And then we're going to be also doing classics, as some people want to know how to ride a hydro cycle, or a paddleboard, as well as a kayak.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Bennett?
And your equipment at night?
The equipment at night is going to be stored in Olympic Drive, at that storage unit.
Offsite location?
Offsite. And at no point will any customers go over there or be allowed at that, at that site. It's just for storage.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was curious about the classes. I'm glad Council, Councilmember Harris brought it up. But I'm curious about the accessibility for our youth. Is there an age group that you're looking at, like minimum age, that can access all those things, or?
Yeah, with the proper adult supervision, you know, of course, if you're going to come and rent something, you're going to have to have either a parent present, or you're going to have to be 18.
So you'll have like a dual bike, or a paddleboat, or things like that?
Yes, correct.
Awesome.
As well as all of the life jackets for everybody.
All ages.
Because I want to see those kids down there enjoying the lake.
Yes, me, too.
I remember being that kid out on the lake. I want that to happen again.
Councilmember Harris?
So, how exciting for, so the sky's the limit here, but is there going to be plans for, obviously you said, not right now, but motorized?
Yes.
Maybe things like, maybe parasailing or something?
Yes.
All right?
Yeah. We want to get into, it's a beautiful lake, you know? We want to get into everything that?
Totally underutilized.
Yeah, underutilized, exactly. Except for fishing. You know, we need to bring some attention to something new here.
I just want to mention that I seen on the lake, they were doing, I think it was sailboat classes not too long ago, and I was really excited to see how much, how many people were taking part in that, and how exciting it was to see that on our lake. So I'm excited to hear this, and also knowing that it was you guys bringing this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, we definitely want to grow into something more, and really have the community be a part of us, and be a part of the community.
Very good. Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. They may have questions, so you might want to stick around. Anyone else wishing to ask a question or make a comment?
She may not like the idea.
About time. We need to do something here. And I'm so proud of these two, and so supportive, and, you know, they also, they didn't mention that they want to do kayak tours. So they're going to hire people to take you out in Cache Creek.
Yeah, the reason we're doing the drop over at the Shady Acres is so that people can enjoy the creek as well, instead of just getting on the lake and enjoying the beauty of the lake. Now they can also get on the creek and see what Cache Creek actually has on.
And hear about Cache Creek, and hear about Clear Lake, and get a sense of, you know, this is something?
It's beautiful.
Yeah, this is something that?
Needs to be appreciated.
Yeah, definitely needs to be appreciated, and talked up and not talked down. So I think it's going to be wonderful. I just wanted to say, I'm totally supportive and proud.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well. Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll bring it back to council for further deliberation or action.
I'm ready to take action, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Very well, Mr. Harris?
I'd like to make a motion to approve license agreements with pedal and paddle rental enterprises.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harris, second by Councilmember Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass as unanimously. EA. All right, moving on to item 11, consideration of amendments to the city's email use and retention policy and the city council norms and procedures to reflect changes in the Public Records Act. And we are looking to our city clerk for this report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, on March 2nd of this year, the California Supreme Court held that when a city employee uses a personal account to communicate about the conduct of public business, the writings may be subject to disclosure under the California Public Records Act. In summary, the change states that a city employee or elected official's use of a personal account, be it email or cell phone, or any manner of electronic communications to conduct city business, could be subject to disclosure under the Public Records Act. Based on that, staff recommends changing both the employee policy and council policy to reflect recommended use of city devices to access city accounts for city business. That's what I have, and I can answer your questions.
Thank you very much.
Myself or Ryan?
Yes, Councilmember Overton?
I have a question. So if we have the city email forwarded to another email, you know, per se, like, you know, transferred over, because we normally want to check one email, sometimes you have them all just, you know, sent to one email, does that mean that the one that's being sent to is also public record? So let's say I have my email here sent to my private, one of my private emails, because I want it all to come into one area.
Yes, they'd both be subject to a public record. But if you've got them in both, then we'd only need to search that city email. So if you want to copy everything to your private email, just so you have it there, that, that would, that would be okay, because then we'd then be able to do, if we needed to, a separate email to provide those responsive documents.
Okay. Although, just to add to that, if you're replying from your private email, that's where you?
That's where you become, yeah, well, mine's been public for so long that it doesn't matter, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that that's kind of clear.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on item number 11, use of public email and records retention? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the amendments to the city's email use and retention policy and the city council norms and procedures to reflect changes in the Public Records Act.
I have a motion in a second. I have a motion in a second by Councilmember Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item carries unanimously. Thank you, Miss Watson. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We talked about this a little bit earlier, but crews are currently working on the Phillips 18 Street project. We also have the 218 notices, which has to do with the universal solid waste service collection. That's at the post office for delivery, so those should be out tomorrow. The planning commission meeting was held this week. The item was on the agenda, was continued. We also had a marketing committee meeting this week, where we selected a new banner and talked about a number of other things. We had a general staff meeting this week as well, just to talk about, kind of update staff as to what's going on. We also had a safety meeting with public works and the police departments, talk about various concerns. And last night, I attended the Lake County Chamber of Commerce dinner over in Cobb. Chris, the finance director, mentioned earlier the AVA. Just want to kind of give you some of the detailed stats. For the city of Clear Lake, we tagged 311, we actually tagged one of those, but this is what went into the official billing for the AVA, but 311 vehicles were tagged, 133 vehicles were towed by the city of Clear Lake, 178 were gone on arrival. The county lake had 87 vehicles tagged, 28 towed, and 23 gone on arrival. The city of Lakeport had 12 vehicles tagged, three towed, and nine gone on arrival. So we actually towed 81% of all vehicles that were towed in this county. So that was pretty phenomenal. Our, our folks deserve quite a bit of credit for all the hard work they did this. And this was just over basically a month period, so that was pretty phenomenal. And just so people are aware, we will be going after the last registered owners for reimbursement on those toes. We've already received one reimbursement so far, and we're moving towards getting more of those.
Very good.
And just as far as some things that are coming up, the Chamber luau is this Saturday, June 24th, at Highlands Park at 5:30. I do have tickets if anyone is interested. National Night Out is an event that we're planning, primarily it's the police department, but it's in conjunction with other public safety organizations. That will be, I believe it's Tuesday, is that correct? Yeah, August 1st. That will be at Highlands Park from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a free event, free hot dogs, free beverages, come on out. It's going to be a really great event. Reminder that we do have the photo contest going on, that ends August 10th, so please get your submissions in. And we have locked in on a date, the State of the City will be Wednesday, August 30th. It will be at the community center from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Catered hors d'oeuvres by Chatterbox Catering, so thank you for, for that. And it's going to be very much the same format as it was last year, where we have kind of the open house from 5:00 to 6:00, and then various speakers from 6:00 to 8:00. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Overton, have you been doing anything?
I've been doing a lot, let's see what I can report on. I also was at the visitor's center opening, I think we all were. It was really nice to see every, you know, the council members and planning commissioners and the community all there. I really, really loved seeing us all there as a unity there. Hadn't happened in the past at Roby Cuties. In fact, I think this was the largest Roby Cutie that the city employees, council, and boards were at at one time. So I was really proud to see that we've really come a long ways and, and moving forward. I was at the K-90, that awesome event. You guys did a great job. I had the privilege of watching them put it all together and seeing how hard they're working to make sure that they have these K-9 dogs. So I really give them kudos for what they did, they did. And they were so nice to donate their leftovers, which my seniors very much loved. So I really appreciate that. I was at a youth center meeting on Monday. I am going to be residing there as their volunteer director, so they have a new board coming in, and I think things will start, you know, moving forward there. I just don't have the time to continue all hell with the transition, so, oh, I wish them all the best a lot, please, everybody help them out. I was on the radio, kind of pumping up the city and what we're doing, and, and, you know, the, the community center, what we'd like to see done there. So it was really nice to be able to just kind of put out to the people. It's kind of like we're moving, we're moving at this really good pace right now, and I just love seeing that. So I just want to make sure that people know what we're doing, so every time we get a chat, so I talk to them about it. We have that, I have the Healthy Collaborative meeting tomorrow. That's our year collaborative for all the organizations. We hope everybody comes, kind of tell us what's been going on in the, in the whole counties, for us all kind of know what everybody's doing. I will be meeting with the Venice Health next week, and then going to the city's conference for the rest of the week. And I won't be here, but on July 1st, the senior center will be having a booth at the parade, selling watermelons, ice cream, frozen waters. Please stop by and support your senior center, and that's the way that we're going to try to start raising some, some extra funds. Plus, I'm going to show this off. One of my board members designed this, and we will be selling shirts. So please support your seniors, and buy a shirt for Miss America. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Well, I, too, attended the K-9 fundraiser. That was a fantastic event for our police department. It was uplifting for me. They were nice enough to take a picture, lifting me in the air, which must have been difficult, and they accomplished that. So they swept me right off my feet. I could go all day, sorry. And then we also, I attended the visitor's center opening, which was fantastic. Going through the visitor's center and to see the renovations that have taken place is just pretty, it's a little emotional almost, because you see how many people have put in their time and energy into that place, and it's just come out so beautifully. And it's going to be a real asset to our community. We're going to be able to use that facility for so many different things. I attended the Calceville Rotary Boutique Wine, Boutique Winery. They had a denim and diamonds fundraising event, and I attended that, it was very nice. It was a great venue. Walmart presented a check to the Redwood Empire Food Bank for $200,000, which was really a nice gesture to our community and a nice gesture to our community in many ways, that's going to be expanded upon. They said they could expand that to produce about 2 million, I believe, in food, which was pretty amazing. I did attend an AVA meeting, which was great reporting, getting the feedback that we've towed so many vehicles. Every vehicle that we tow is one more eyesore off of our community, and it just makes me so excited, and we ended up by doing so much work in such a short period of time, we're awarded the lion's share of the next allotment of money, which was really nice for our community, because we're going to be able to keep doing this, which is very important. And then, the last thing is on a personal note, I'm going to be a grandfather, so it's pretty exciting for me. My little girl's going to have a little girl, so there it is for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett.
Congratulations. Also attended the AVA meeting, I want to commend our city staff, court enforcement, and all who did and is doing an outstanding job with the abandoned vehicle process. It's going to be an ongoing thing, but they had to do a lot in a short period of time, and everybody stood up to the plate and did what they needed to do and more, very proud. The visitor's center, the chamber commerce opening was very uplifting. Proud to see all of us make it there, along with some city staff, the police department, with their refreshments and all, very impressive. We had a PEG meeting last Monday. We are looking at, doing a, a survey, a website survey to ascertain what our viewer, number of viewers are, we can't get that number from MediaCom unfortunately. I don't know exactly why, it's explained to us, but it doesn't make a lot of sense. They can tell who the hell's watching some stupid show, nobody understands the intelligence, but they can't tell you who's watching, thanks to you.
See, no, it isn't.
I know. We're looking at maybe doing a fundraiser, maybe in February or March next year, and maybe doing it on a format of a telephone, and getting some local talent and all. I think it was some good ideas thrown around by Ed Robey, our station manager, brought from the county education and all, and I think we may come up with some good ideas on that.
Thank you very much, sir. Vice Mayor, have you been doing anything?
A few things, I'll just go quickly since most of them have already been said, on June 10th, with the visitor's center opening. What I'm most proud about that is, it's, to me, it's a change, we're not talking about these things anymore, we're actually completing these projects, we're getting things done, there's action behind the words, and I was really proud to see what we've done, especially, nobody's said it yet, I want to make sure and say thank you to Mike Vanderburg for his work, because he is definitely the pivotal force behind that change. On June 14th, I was invited to the Democrat, the Lake County Democratic Party Club to talk about LGBT, civil rights, and also to talk about what we're doing in the city of Clear Lake. My list was amazing of what we're doing in this city, and it made me really proud of what we're doing. I want to thank the council, our team, I think we brought back a sense of leadership from the DIES, and I definitely want to thank the staff and city manager, Greg Folsom, for providing the focus to getting so many things done. So it was just amazing to be able to talk about it. Was also the Walmart check giveaway, that amount of money was amazing, astounding, I had to thank Redwood Empire Food Bank for the work that they already do here in Lake County, and now the extra work that they're going to be providing as well. Looking forward to that. Then yesterday, we had a marketing committee, we talked about purchasing more banners to be placed on our parks so that we can pretty up our parks during different holidays, different seasons. We talked about plaques in the park, which was mentioned also by Councilmember Harris, or also by Liz Bird. So I'm liking what we're doing there, soon we need to make sure and get that photo before the weather changes on us too, we've been talking about that. On July 1st, we have our parade, it starts at 11:00 a.m. We see more people than any other day of the year out in our community. We welcome everybody that comes to enjoy that moment with us. If you haven't already registered for Flo, please do so. If you haven't registered for Boon, please do so. It is an amazing day, and I love seeing this day in our community, so don't miss it, Saturday, July 1st at 11:00 a.m., and then fireworks later on, probably between 9:00 and 9:30. We've been unfortunately seeing a lot of fires around our community, I want to thank our firefighters for the job they've been doing, making sure to go after these fires, they seem to be going full force, they don't want to mess around, they want to make sure to get rid of these fires. But I'm asking everybody, if you're a renter, if you're a property owner, look around, what else can you do to help and make our community safer? Because I'm driving around and I'm still seeing a lot of weeds everywhere, a lot of dead trees with hanging branches, and that is fuel for the fire. And so if you can please just take a moment of your time on a weekend and look how you can make your neighborhood safer, it will help you and it will help everyone else around you. Other than that, that's all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Trying to be quick, because we took a lot of the same things. But I also wanted to, I failed to do this at our last meeting, I want to thank our public works crew, and thank you for being a good steward. I don't know if anybody's aware, when we were doing the cleanup at the Lower Lake Cemetery, several of our public works crew volunteered their time, went down and did a lot of work at the Lower Lake Cemetery trying to get it ready for Memorial Day. Thank you for doing that, and I apologize for not mentioning it at the last meeting. I wanted to say also, I was at the ribbon cutting, but what I saw is a real testament to our community. A lot of people were there because a lot of people's hands and efforts and energy and labor went into converting a 1940s, early 1940s home into what we're now using as our visitor's center and Chamber of Commerce office. And it's just, that's what really will turn our community around. It's not five of us sitting here, it's not the city staff that works in this office, in this building, it is a community that is inspired, that feels that they are part of something, and they want to come forward, and that's what I saw at that ribbon cutting, and it really touched me, and I just thank you to everybody who was there, thank you for those who participated in getting that building, that house rehabilitated to what it is today, it's absolutely fantastic, it's beautiful, a lot of volunteer hours went into that, and that's how we're going to clean this town up, building by building, you know, street by street, and we're going to do it. K-9 Dinner was fantastic, Chief, thank you so much, your presence there was notable to say the least, but I also wanted to mention, that is the single fundraiser that keeps our K-9 program going. It doesn't come from our budget, it comes from the efforts of the K-9 handlers and their partners, and those folks who care and volunteer at the police department. Another outstanding testament to people coming together, doing the right thing, and donating their personal time to keep a good program going. I wanted to thank those who joined me and Councilmember Bennett at the Lake APC and Lake Transit Authority. We're donating two buses, one to Lake Port Fire, one to Lake County Fire, that they're going to use to practice doing rescues, evacuations, medical evacuations, and also some fire training with two dilapidated old Lake County Transit buses, that I understand the drivers are really glad to see us, they give the donation to, because they didn't like driving them anymore. And then moving on, also on the 14th of this month was the Walmart presentation. We have a lot of kids who are homeless, they may not be living on the street because they're couch surfing. They are thinking day to day, during school hours, not of doing their schoolwork, and not of what other, you know, things are coming up, social activities and that, they're thinking, where am I going to sleep, and am I going to have enough food in my stomach when I go to bed? And so when the Redwood Food Bank came back, came out, and I think they solicited, they solicited a donation, but I've gone to Walmart, and I got to tell you, they're pretty stingy with their donations. So to see them come forward with $200,000 for this project, that is, and I saw some comments on social media, folks, it is 100% Lake County. That money was donated to Lake County, it's staying in Lake County to help our youth and people that are hungry. Just fantastic, great things happening. And last, who's coming to the July 1st parade? I want you to know, well, not you guys, councilmembers, I asked the Clear Lake Car Club if they might have some convertibles we could write in. So if you're interested, let me know, because I'm coordinating with the president of the club, see if we can get some really cool antique cars for councilmembers. You got your Jeep, I know, I know, you got your Jeep, I wasn't...
My kind of is still dependent, I may, I may...
I have an antique '41 Jeep, so it's antique.
Not as antique as yours. That is true, here. Anyway, so I hope everybody turns out, we're going to have a fantastic fireworks show, all donated to the Lions Club, this is a Lions Club deal, they do a fantastic job, they have a nice, safe, community program that they've run every year, and it's always been fantastic, right across the street at Austin Park. And then once the sun goes down, I understand, we have a celebrity that may be doing some igniting of these fireworks, and he's pretty excited about it. All right. Now, moving on to the next, I conclude my report, moving on to a future agenda item, does anybody have anything for the good we were?
I have something I'd like to add.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
I'd like to add the consideration for a plaque for the Ruby family at Austin's Park.
Very good, Mr. Folsom, can you look into that? We're going to need to look for a place for, to place it, and are you thinking something bronze and heavy?
I am, I'm thinking something bronze and heavy, I'm thinking something probably associated with the rock, the rock wall area, or maybe something where it would be a kind of permanent location.
We should ask the Parson Rec for their consideration and recommendation, so if you could bring that to them, I would appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to talk a little more then. So, I've been meeting with a planner from Ukiah, the city of Ukiah, I've been talking with some of our local contractors, I'm trying to figure out what is the best way to stimulate, because I've not seen it in other cities, the demo or removal of old dilapidated mobile homes that occupy a lot of the properties in our city, and also old vacation cabins. We live in a town, a city that's absolutely beautiful, but we do have some eyesores, and we do have some old family cabins that, you know, were once a great place to come and vacation, that have gone through the process of becoming rental income, you know, for the families who no longer want to come here, and unfortunately, they've become dilapidated. And the idea is, if builders could be given credit for the square footage, including additional square footage credits, to build something a little nicer, to incorporate and merge one lot into two, to get away from our 50 by 100 foot lots into maybe more sizable properties, 100 by 100 foot lots, giving incentive to that. And then also, I've asked staff to consider putting our funding of our permit process and everything else, not at the beginning startup where they haven't even started the project yet, but maybe backload it halfway through when they're actually getting draws from the bank, or prior to, if they pay all their permit fees, development fees, everything like this, prior to the final of their building permit. Several of the contractors said that would really help them get off the ground and get their projects going to help clean up the city. And I want to thank Mr. Folsom and Mr. Becknell for hearing me drone on about this, away from the city hall and in city hall, this idea. But I think we need to look at doing this, we've got some projects that are beginning to happen in the South County area, and I see other growth and people wanting to come and look to invest in our town, and I think some of these properties that already have water and sewer connects and other services to the property, that makes some of these dilapidated buildings a little more valuable to the families who may want to get rid of them and we can clean them up, which also increases our tax base. So that's, I'm looking for consensus.
I'm asking for...
I agree with the details, but I want to have the discussion.
Yes.
So the discussion is on whether to give them credit for taking...
It is. I didn't want to, I wanted to give a full picture of what we could do to try to rehabilitate some of our properties that have dilapidated buildings on them.
That's okay, that's general.
Okay? Incentivize it. And I've asked staff if they could look into that, but I feel compelled to bring it to you guys for direction to staff without just coming from me.
Absolutely.
So do we have consensus for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Folsom. Anything else? I have nothing else. I'd like to point out that it's about five minutes to seven, and we're adjourned.